The meeting's live, we can begin captioning.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to call to order the Economic Realization Committee meeting of Friday, November 20th. It is 11:02 a.m. and we are live on a digital platform. We have two agenda items today, but either Dave or Adam, can one of you help me out? And oh, here we go. Just pulling up the agenda, I apologize, I don't know exactly how the agenda items are formatted or are labeled. And this is not happening as quickly as I had hoped. I know that one of our two agenda items related to a further discussion of LURDA and potential different ways that we could make that work for us as it hasn't in the past. Or it has worked for us in the past, but other approaches to LURDA that might be more successful for the city. Mr. Banks, do you want to leave that off?
Well, actually, that's item number two.
I had a feeling, but I can't, but my Wi-Fi is doing weird things.
Item number one was discussion on amending the zoning ordinance.
Okay, do we, do we want to handle that first? All right, we can, we can go there first. All right, discussion on amending the zoning ordinance. Mr. Nar, you sent us a handful, two ordinances, one from Redding and one from Lancaster, looking for some guidance on what direction we wanted to head with revising our own zoning ordinances. Can you talk to me a bit about those two and why you thought they were, what, I guess, what elements of those? One of them was an overlay district ordinance, which I found pretty interesting. But can you, can you talk to me a bit about in what ways you feel like that would be applicable to the city?
Well, what, what I, what we did was is when I went out there and looked and was looking at a lot of the urban development, they're talking like, like we are with the Park Avenue project, kind of redeveloping that whole area. So they were more that concept. I think, and again, I may be wrong, but I think what we're looking at here is, let's make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly, let's make it more harmonious with the, with the area as far as within our CC zoning districts. Not redeveloping them as a whole, but when these land developments come up, we have a more harmonious effect to it as well as pedestrian friendly. I'm assuming that's what we're kind of looking to do in that CC zoning district versus going in urban development throughout the whole CC zone.
Dave, what do you think about that? Adam?
Yeah, Adam, if you have your thoughts, I'll, you know how I can go on and on. No, I, I think that there might be some, I think there's merit to us looking at a standard for CC now. Maybe not as stripped as we were talking about for the entire CC. I think, you know, you and Joe talked me off that cliff a little bit, Gary. But, um, but I think it's good to, for us to have standards in place. But I do like the overlay district, I think there, it's a, it's a good route to go because these are, you know, not all the CC areas are created equal within the city of Williamsport.
Right, and I think that's kind of why I wanted to provide you with the CC, not so much that's what I, that's my target, saying this is what we want to do, but give you an idea that versus changing the whole CC and as a zone all over, let's concentrate maybe on the Washington Boulevard, which is where we have the ability to have it more walkability, accessibility from the college standpoint, residential neighborhoods, and you already have businesses established in those areas. So let's maybe consider, instead of doing that, just keep that Washington as an overlay zone, saying, hey, here are these requirements that we want within this zone, whether it be making sure that the buildings, that basically if they're going to develop it and tear something down, that they bring it up to what's in harmony there versus have it setback like I know everyone was concerned with the Dollar General. The other thing too is the walkability, okay? Do we put something in the zoning ordinance in certain sections and say, we want this as a requirement? If you have a parking area, we want a, not just a handicap accessibility, but that pedestrian accessibility to your development.
I think those all sound like good concepts to me. So if we're talking an overlay district, we're looking at specific CC zones, not every CC zone, obviously. I mean, I guess the issue with CC zones in the city is that they kind of run the gamut, right? From something that's relatively urban, like Washington Boulevard, to that strip along the highway down there by Burger King on Maynard Street, which obviously is not, is urban in its own way, but not the same urban.
And that would also be correct is up on Wash, up on West Ford Street, up towards the Ford dealership up in that area, there's a CC zone up there. So we want to kind of maybe stay away from overlaying that to meet those requirements. Because then if we do that, then we are taking that little area outside of what's really around it, which is your ML zoning district and things of that nature in that zone. So I, again, my thing of it, thinking of it is, is maybe look at right next to the CBD, which would be that zone on Washington Boulevard, and let's do an overlay there. I'm not sure we can possibly, and again, it's something to think about is, within the Newberry section up by Dunkin' Donuts, that's, do we want to do something urban or kind of do an overlay up there? Or already, there's smaller parcels even in the CC, and I think it's going to be kind of tough to maybe set those type of standards as an overlay up in that area as well. But that's just my thought.
Got it. I do feel like we need some sort of an overlay in New, or that some sort of an overlay in Newberry would be wise as well, only because it's a, it's a similar sort of district that I feel, we might not want, for better or worse, the exact same standards. But unless there's a way to set standards that sort of require it to adhere to the rest of the neighborhood. But I do feel like those, those sort of slightly more, more urban districts in the city might benefit from slightly stricter standards than what exists in the general CC zones. What are your feelings on that, guys? Adam and Dave? Crooked.
Sorry, I couldn't get to my mute button. No, I agree with you to the respect that, you know, having nothing is not necessarily in our, in our interest. So some, if it's an overlay district, if that, that's the direction we want to go, it might need to be a different overlay district, you know, not the same standards, because it is a different makeup, there are different parcel sizes out there in Newberry. The road system's a little bit different. So in terms of having the same overlay, perhaps not, but, you know, guiding the, guiding development there would, would be helpful, I believe, to the makeup of that neighborhood.
Yeah, right. That's sort of my thought. I guess, so my secondary question is, I, I think the concept of an overlay district is one that, that has a lot of power and could really enable us to do great things in the city. It also strikes me as something that it could take us a bit of time to put together. Am I right about that, Mr. Nar?
Yeah, from what I've been researching as far as that, and, and I have talked out a little, reached out a little bit to the Redding as well as Erie, Erie has a zoning department up there, they have an overlay area up there as well. And they do say it is a very time consuming as far as to put it together.
Okay. That, yeah, that was kind of what I was thinking. So my follow-up question is, if we're looking to have an immediate impact in these neighborhoods, then perhaps we need to look at tweaking the zoning requirements in CC districts more as relates to that, that second document you sent us, Gary, and then look at a stronger overlay at some point over the next year or so. Does that seem accurate to you?
Yeah, and what I think we could do is, is to tweak it, obviously, the one that I sent you from Lancaster, which actually shows you that area that where, okay, to bring, to bring the building so that they're not so like setback, that they're more in harmonious. And it's something similar what I do within the residential zones when I see houses and someone wants to put up a house, bake it lot. I don't necessarily require them to follow that setback, but make sure that they're within harmony with that. So that's something that I can actually put that in the zoning ordinance under the heightened bulk area of the zoning ordinance, which is 1345 or 1342. I can put that in there because that can go, if you look into where they talk about the Bowleg BCD, we can add that in there to put something along that line. Within the CC zone in this location, here's what we are requiring as far as a setback and put that in there, so that way it follows that, it gives us some teeth marking saying, hey, if you are going to do something, you have to be within line, you can't set it back just to satisfy your development, but we want you to keep with what's harmony in there. Put something like that in, in that section, that 1342 under, under there. And then as well, when you get into some of the design standards, there's some sections in there where I see that we can add and put some language in there about the pedestrian accessibility, especially around the parking lot situation when they do that, as well as for them to have access for that. So I think any, immediately, I think those two things are, from my understanding of what you guys were looking at, they're the two critical things that we have. The other part of that ordinance that I sent you, where they were talking about the CC and the CS, and they were talking about the facade, is there's language in there where it talks to you about, well, if you're within so many feet of the CBD, which has that design standard, where we don't want metal buildings, you have to conform to that type of design aspect within that realm versus saying, well, let's do that, the whole CC zoning district, but just close to that CBD. So we, I do have that proposed language in the ordinance that we currently have, and everyone's been reviewing for a while. But I know I can, I can work something up quickly to get the language in there about moving the setbacks, put something in there as far as pedestrian accessibility in both of those areas, in the design standard as well as 1342.
Got it, so we can look at that, is that the sort of thing that you could run past the planning commission in two weeks' time?
Exactly, I can, I can create some language, let it, run it by the solicitors, if the solicitors are fine, let it run by real quick through ERC, then I can put it on planning, planning will review it, and then it will be counseled the following week for approval to get it amended.
Okay.
So that is a quick fix there. And I think, and again, I think they were the two areas that you were concerned with, was bring the building up, let's get accessibility, and again, my only concern with when you get into the design standards and the facade in the CC, if it's close to that CBD, which again, when I spoke with the planning commission, and they were all kind of ingredients, we really want to keep that strict design standard just strictly in that CBD, but yet we don't want to have new development right next to that CBD and have it being a total, you know, metal building.
Yeah, I, I, well, I think, I think a little bit of, right, a CBD bleed is a, is desirable. I do think as we work into maybe a more of an overlay district concept, that we can work on some distinct standards, I suppose, for different neighborhoods. But in this case, right, at least, at least a little bit of a bleed from the CBD where we have design standards into the other zones is, is good. And I'm just, and, and the, the parking question was the one thing I didn't hear you bring up. Is there a way that we can work that in as well?
Well, and again, the parking issue, like I said, what we've, what I've sent you as far as the proposals, and I've pulled that, and I've sent that to you in the past, I provided you with, and what I tried to do with some of this parking, and I know some of this is driven by the colleges concerned for parking, and I pulled up like, like Lock Haven University, some of the other third-class cities that have those, Harrisburg, and those proposed amendments that I provided to you are, and again, are kind of my suggestions as far as how we change them. Now, you can tweak that by a number of maybe going one to five, four, something along that line per student. But that is something that, again, same thing with that, that's a quick fix with me bringing that through as far as minor zoning amendments versus taking that development into that overlay area. I can put that together and say by, by mid-January, at the latest, we would have a zoning amendment to parking and have something in there for the setbacks as well as accessibility.
Okay. That sounds good, and Dave and Adam, I want your opinion on that, Gary. But what I was actually specifically referring to with parking was the discussion of moving parking to the side or rear of new developments in CCs.
And again, that, that would be, you could do that as a quick fix. My own, again, my only concern when you get into that is, then, you know, however they design it, you're gonna have that issue with the handicap accessibility. I know, I don't think Joe's in here today, because I think he was off this afternoon. But that was his concern as well, is if we require them to put that in the back, how are you going to address handicap accessibility? Because they, a lot of places, when they develop like that are not, and especially in the CC zone, are not going to want to have them come in the back, which primarily for that aspect as far as within the building, from an engineer standpoint, is going to be like the storage and things of that nature, where it's not designed to do it that way.
Right. Okay, so Dave, Adam, what's your thought on working up some quick fix changes and then an overlay?
I think it's a good plan, sorry, I stepped over you. I think it's a good plan in terms of the location of the parking, I, I do see your point, Mr. Nar, it's, it's a difficult arrangement when, when we have entirely different parking structure in these different districts, especially for people who have accessibility issues. So I think that's something that I'll certainly be putting my mind to and looking at elsewhere to other, to other similar cities and try to figure out what they, how they handle that, you know, what's been successful and what's not been successful. What do you think, Adam?
Well, I mean, there's, there's two things here, there's the short-term fix that we've just discussed, there's the long-term overlays. Long-term, it seems to me, the question with the overlays, it seems that we've got a solution. In my mind, the, the next step is, okay, we got to get down to the weeds to figure out how that actually works, but I think we need to really look at, I think, neighborhood by neighborhood, what do we want to do and how do we design them? So that's the big question for those in my mind. I think short-term, I mean, yeah, like, these are valid concerns, this seems to be a legitimate fix. I just want to be cautious that we are not going to hinder any short-term development. I mean, we, we don't have, aside from the gateway, we don't have a lot going on, and we may be at a point where we maybe need it to be going on, so I just want to be cognizant of that. But from a high level, it seems that, that we're there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think for better or for worse, I think what we're talking about too, Adam, is in, in the long run, providing the sort of guidance to developers that will, that we would hope would incentivize development. That is to say, A, developers know what we want in a district, B, that gives them the assurance that they're not going to, as just happened, for instance, to the Sawhorse, you know, put a business in and have it immediately, you know, have another business settle next door to it that is not, that, that, that they feel is, that the developer feels is not in keeping with their own business goals, you know? So I think we, we protect the interests of the businesses in the district, and we, and we make certain that, that, that any new developments know that the district is unattractive to mirror this particular style of development, right? And we decide what that is, I think that actually can be a really, a really powerful tool. But, but you're right that we, you know, I think we also want to be clear that, that we want to make certain that we allow avenues for, and flexibility for requests for, for something slightly different, you know? We want, we want to allow people to be creative when they're doing projects in the city. We want to encourage them to be, to be high and creative, maybe rather than low and creative. But, you know, we, we need to, we need to try to create avenues for that flexibility while making it clear, I think, both in the overlay and in the modifications that Gary's talking about, making quickly here, that, that we're aiming for a specific standard and, and that we expect even, you know, creative approaches to, to meet the underlying, the underlying spirit, if not the, if not the letter of the law. Okay, so that said, Gary, it sounds like to me, could, could we possibly look at having those interim modifications put together so that ERC could look them over in two weeks' time?
Oh, I definitely can do that, because that'll also give me time to get it out to the solicitors and have them take a real quick review of it as well. And to recap, my understanding of it is, is we're looking at the quick fix as far as the building setbacks and pedestrian accessibility. And I think, are you also looking at amending that, the off-street parking when it comes to the colleges in particular, as well as some of the retail? Because again, those three things I can get on there quickly, as far as when we get into the overlay and we're requiring the location of parking lots, that's something that may take a little bit longer to go through, Liz, or Miss Millie.
No, please call me Liz, Gary. I have great difficulty standing on ceremony, so I ask that no one else do it too in my presence. All right. I think that we should certainly look at the off-street parking changes that we've been discussing now for, for a while. And, but if we can, you know, looking at our design standards ordinance, that we currently have not so much the CBD design standards as the rest of it, it seems as though there might be some sort of language we could insert in the, in the parking element there that could give us a little bit more, could offer a bit more clarity, I suppose, to developers about, at least about our wishes for parking. Priority shall be given to parking in the rear of a structure, or something like that. But I don't want to, you know, you obviously know, A, what's enforceable, and B, what's just adding extroverbiage and making things unwieldy without having any actual impact.
And I think that maybe the issue right, right away is going to be, is in how are we going to enforce it and what we can do that. Again, a lot of times when a developer comes in, as a matter of fact, I would say 99%, they do sit down with me, and that can be my first, even though we might not have something there and force it. But when they talk to me as far as what are you looking, what are your visions? I can address that at that point until we have some teeth in an overlay district as far as where we want the parking and say, listen, okay, this small project, we would prefer you put the parking here, but we understand that, you know, you may have to, because of ADA compliance, not have that basically in the rear of the property.
Right. Or at least have some parking to the front or something like that. Okay, so I definitely think we should move forward with the changes to the off-street parking requirements, although that's not specifically on our agenda today, as well as with those limited changes we discussed. And then, I don't know if we want to set up some kind of work session that's not quite as formal at some point in the beginning of the year to have a look at the, the overlay district. Because I'd like to see us try and get started on that, even though I know it's going to be a much longer process. And perhaps we could, in the meantime, Dave, I don't know, if you have time, or Gary, we should look at, you know, numerous overlay districts from other areas. One, one concept I liked from the overlay district that you sent us from Redding was specifically kind of the concept of, you know, the privilege of developing in this zone compared with the requirements of providing public space, you know what I mean? And I was interested to see if we could think of some sort of carrot we could put in there as well as the stick. You know what I'm saying? I, I'm not sure if we can, but I, I do think that it's, it's a powerful concept to say that we're providing access to something, you know, or, and then in return, requiring these very specific regulations to be followed.
And that's why I want, and that's why I wanted to show you the ready one in particular, because like I said, it does deal with the overlay and what we can offer them.
Yeah, exactly, sounds great. Yeah, I thought, I thought that one was, was a good one. If I can, if we're, if Dave and Adam, are you okay with that plan then, reviewing changes in two weeks? And trying to get this passed early in January?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Then can we discuss the parking proposal that you sent us, Gary, real quick? As long as we're looking at bringing that forward at the same time?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Dave, Adam, I don't know if you've actually reviewed this, we've had it for a while, but, but it wasn't specifically on the agenda today, so I don't know if you had a look at it. But do you have any comments on the, or actually, I guess, Gary, could I ask you first to talk to us about the impact this will have? Especially on, on the institutional zones on colleges?
And again, what it really, a lot of it really comes down to is, it's changing, for example, Penn College, like I said, they are more of a, of a large learning center versus where like coming, they're smaller classroom sizes. So to go and utilize and say, well, you, it's based off a square footage, does kind of hinder, make, hinder Penn College maybe a little bit more than like coming does. But looking at most of the colleges around and the ordinances that we have around, those proposals that I put in that, in that one to you that I sent to you was in red, it really draws into, based off of the number of students, not the size of the buildings and the square footage of the uses.
Well, I also think, Gary, that it goes in line with, you know, over the last decade, Penn College has been moving to have more on-student, or student living on-site. So their parking requirements may be less, so having a kind of expansive requirement for parking is not necessarily as necessary for them as it was in the past. And I did look this over, it's, I think it's a good change. And I haven't gone into as much as I would have liked to, but do you feel, Gary, that this is enough in the, in the direction of reducing park requirements?
And again, I think, I think it does, and from where I took a lot of this from was other facilities, whether it be Harrisburg, whether it be Lock Cave and Clare, and those type of things that have those colleges in there, they don't use that square footage for me that the city has forever, they use it by based off, and again, it's based off by numbers. The more numbers you have, yeah, the more requirement for parking you're going to need. But because of the, and especially now, the numbers are kind of down, it's not, it kind of pulls that in line. And, and again, I just think it's a really good match for what we have. It doesn't restrict, it doesn't restrict them for development, but then it also gives us something to say, you know, you do have to have some parking for what you, for what you're utilizing. And again, if growth, if growth over the couple, next couple of years, you know, they increased tremendously as far as colleges going to school, back to school, hopefully that happens, then that's what they're in line to do versus saying it's based off of a square footage facility, and they just don't have the students utilizing parking because they don't have the students.
Yeah. I think that's sort of the fear. So, but can you talk to me, Gary, really specifically about how this would impact Penn or like home and colleges parking requirements as written? Did we look at that, the specific, how many spaces they're currently required to have and how many they would be required to have?
Yeah, we, we have, we have, and again, each project, for example, and actually, I'm working with like coming right now because they're getting ready to do the music building. So when they do that music building, then basically we sit down and go over, okay, here's what you had, here's what, so they have an overlay as well as Penn College, and we went through this with Penn College when they were doing the welding building, and that's really what brought this up that they were concerned with is because they had to go through a variance procedure and go through that process because of the parking. And I think what this will do is it will put that more in line so that they still have a lot of room for future development. And us changing these proposals this way is not going to hinder it in any way.
Okay. And our requirements, that is to say, how much less parking would they have been required to have on that project?
I'd have to go back and pull that specifically, and I have not done that.
Okay, just trying to get a sense of how much it lowers our parking footprint. Because I do think in the long run that we should be looking to reduce parking, parking, parking requirements as much as we can citywide, just to try and reduce the, the amount of parking that we have on any given site. But, you know, obviously that depends on zones, I know a lot of the fire over the, the Dollar General up on Washington Boulevard was related to residents being concerned about parking and having enough parking. So, you know, I, I know, I know that we all know around institutional zones, and, you know, around colleges, there's, there can be parking conflict with residents, so it's something we need to be aware of too. Anyway, if, I guess my suggestion would be that, the planning commission has already reviewed these parking changes, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Then, and they, and they have approved them, or they've reviewed them and kind of haven't made any firm motion?
They haven't done a formal recommendation, so what I can do is, I will put this on the December 7th planning commission. And if they don't have it, I think, when would our, our next meeting be?
Our next meeting will be, the next ERC meeting?
Correct.
Be the third, the fourth of December?
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, unfortunately.
Planning won't be until the week after, will it?
Right, exactly. That's the only thing with that. And then again, I, I do know that in our conversation with this is they didn't have any, again, because we were just having as an informal discussion. Um, they didn't make that recommendation, but they did not have any concerns with what we had here.
Uh, okay, got it. Um, so I guess that's at least a positive sign. So we can, um, Adam and Dave, if you wouldn't mind reviewing this, Gary, if you could possibly for our next ERC meeting, um, just bring some of the numbers, the estimates of the impact this is going to have on parking in institutional zones. That, that would be awesome, um, so that we could have a look at that. Um, and then maybe we can, um, we can take this as a package to planning. E- either looking at that Monday meeting in December or more likely, I'm assuming, looking at the first Monday in January.
Yeah, I know I'll definitely be able to have like coming college again, because I'm working with them right now on their land development plan for the music center. And that was all part, that's all part of it. Anytime I do the land development, something like that, we look at their complete overlay, what do they have for parking and how much overlap they do have. So I'll definitely have like coming and I'll, I'll try to hard to get that Penn College done as well.
Okay. Well, I, I think, I think it would just be illustrative to have at least one institution. I'm not, I'm not concerned about having everybody, but having a sense of, of the impact. Um, and, and I, well, I guess if, uh, if you feel as though like homing would have positive things to say about the amendments, you might ask them if they want to do attend or something like that. You know what I mean?
And what I will do is like I've done in the past is I've reached out to Jeff Bennett and I'll reach out to Pat Marty, provide them both, this is the, this is the proposal that has been kind of kicked around. You're more than welcome to attend the next ERC meeting to discuss further.
I guess that, that's kind of what I'm thinking is it might be good from stakeholders if we're, if we're looking at, it's something that will impact the colleges. Um, and, uh, um, see whether they think this goes far enough or whether, you know, they think it's a good first step and they're looking for further modifications, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we don't want to pass something and then have them be like, well, that didn't do anything for us. You know? I mean, I, I know we don't zone for specific users, but I, I also think if we've had people who are concerned about um, our parking requirements, then we, you know, they, those are the people that, those are some of the people that we need to consult when we're looking at modifying them.
That's fine.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Um, anything else on any of these items, guys? Otherwise we'll just see them again in two weeks in, in draft form. Okay. Thanks, Dave. Um, all right. Then, uh, the next item on our agenda, which I still have not pulled up, is a discussion on, um, potential future LERTAs. Uh, so we can move on to item number two. Um, and, uh, Mr. Banks, I think you actually, um, brought this item to the agenda. Do you want to talk a little bit about it? And then maybe we can talk to Mr. Grimes and Mr. Mimi?
Well, this just came from, uh, informal discussions I had with, um, Mr. Mimi and Mr. Grimes separately. But kind of on the same day, everyone was thinking the same thing. Uh, we had discussed this back in, refresh my memory here, Nick. Was it March? I believe?
Yeah, it was on the ERC agenda, March 13th.
Yeah. Yeah, it was right before everything, the world started ending. So, um, so it kind of got dropped. Um, you know, we, we had discussed where the, those current LERTA is located, and that's a commercial LERTA. And then in, it had been mentioned talking about a residential LERTA and, and then we just haven't gone any further. So, um, talking with Mr. Mimi, I know he's, um, worked with these quite a bit in his experience. So, uh, I had kind of wanted to hear, um, what the different options are. Um, we had talked a little bit about a citywide LERTA, residential LERTA, um, to kind of boost uh, development a little bit. Um, but I know Mr. Grimes, um, is, was very adamant and, and rightfully so in making sure that we advertise the LERTA. So we get the long-term positive benefit of, from the tax base and don't just end up losing uh, money and people who'd already planned on, on, uh, developing and then, get the advantage of the LERTA. Um, so with that said, um, that's where this all came from. So I don't know if, uh, Nick, if you want to start or Mr. Mimi, if you want to start?
I'll be happy to start if you'd like. Um, I sent you guys out a, a couple dozen documents an hour before the meeting on a workday. So I'm sure you had lots of time to thoroughly look through all of that. Um, but those are documents from the last, you know, few times that, that we've discussed this LERTA program. Um, it's come up multiple times in the city. Um, always with good intentions, but as I've always been an advocate for, it's, it's not been administered properly in my mind. Um, generally, uh, over the last few LERTA rounds, it's come up because a specific business has asked us. Um, it was Hutchinson and his project, um, at the Goodwill area that brought it up two rounds ago. Um, Center for Independent Living came to us and said, we want to do a project, but we need to have positive cash flow and we need an abatement of taxes. Um, which is how we approved our last LERTA. Um, that project never went through, but we did approve the LERTA. And then it came up for discussion in March because of a potential development at the old Sheridan School. Um, each of the last two times that we approved the LERTA, um, it was not advertised, it was not pushed. We didn't, you know, have any strong partnerships. And we just had the one business that asked for it, um, qualify. Uh, the most successful round of LERTA, if you want to call it successful based on the number of approved applicants was during the um, gas boom. And that was a lot of hotels for the, for the larger LERTA product, projects. We had, um, Water Tower Square due development. We had some actual residential development. That was one of our few times that we've done a residential LERTA. Those were the new houses that were built in Newberry, um, where the railroad tracks used to be there around like Depot Street and Trenton. Um, but there was some criticism to that in regards, especially to the hotel development, saying that those hotels were coming here regardless because of the gas boom and we did not need to give them tax breaks to do it. I don't know if that's the case right or wrong, but I've heard that, that argument a few times now. Um, the one thing I really wanted to point you guys to, if we start to develop this program again, I think it takes a lot of work upfront to do it right from the administration and, and from different partners. But, um, scrantonplan.com/lerta, I sent that out. They do a wonderful job at advertising, at getting the partners together, at really making a full, comprehensive program. There's this extremely aggressive 10 years, 100% abatement. Um, but they have the chamber on board, they have the taxing bodies on board, they have the property owners on board. You know, you can go to their website and it's very clearly and easily laid out to understand your benefits, to understand what properties are available, um, how to contact people. It's, it's a very good, comprehensive program, um, for it. I think LERTA is a good idea only if it's done properly. Um, how we've done it in the past sort of is, you know, a business asked for it and we gave it to that business and that's it. Or we've done it where literally people who come in for building permits, we've said, hey, you might qualify for this. And those are people that were building anyways. Um, that's the opposite of what LERTA is intended to do. Uh, the, the question that I always ask, which is really the, the driver to decide if, if a LERTA program is successful is would that development have occurred without LERTA? Um, so that, I, I gave you guys all that information. Obviously that takes some time to go through. But within there, it's, it's our current LERTA program that expires in December of 2022. Um, it has some fact sheets about LERTA, some of the state requirements. Um, because we do, you know, the Pennsylvania constitution has a uniformity clause and we have to tax um, places uniform, um, unless there's specific exceptions granted by the state legislature. And, um, they have specifically outlined LERTA requirements. So there's only certain types of abatements, you know, it has to be a certain number of years. Um, it has to be certain percentages. Now they give you some different options in there, but we can't just really make up our own program. Um, and it, it does have to be in a place that's economically distressed. You know, there's, there's some certain language there. I, I think based on what I've seen in other communities in Pennsylvania is we can do a citywide LERTA and be able to um, justify that. But, you know, we have to be careful that we don't take a, a very affluent area and say, hey, we want a LERTA here. Um, because, you know, we could get in trouble if somebody would challenge us. But the other thing to remember is we, we are able to do it based on certain districts. It doesn't need to be citywide. And if we have a specific plan or goal in mind, you know, if we set a vision, a three, five, 10-year goal, we can, you know, again, a comprehensive program is part of that. As part of this Park Avenue study and development, you know, we could say we want a residential LERTA in Park Avenue. Um, if we look at Reach Road and say, we need some development there, we could do an industrial LERTA there, you know, and we can make it more aggressive than the rest of the city, you know? We could do a 10-year 100% in one area and we could do a five-year LERTA in another area. So there's some different options here, but again, my, my biggest caution is that it takes some work and it takes some time to do a LERTA effectively. Um, and we need to get all the partners on board and we need to remember this helps the chamber. This helps the school district, this helps the county. So it doesn't need to be all of our resources either into this.
I think those are all excellent points, uh, Mr. Grimes. Um, Mr. Maybe, did you have anything to add?
Well, I think Mr. Grimes, Nick covered it pretty well. A LERTA district can be very effective, but it has to be well-developed. And that, that, there are options as to how you develop it. The ultimate goal is to try to induce individuals that, uh, have, how would I say, properties that, uh, are in need of some love and care, uh, to, 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 induce them into investing in their properties. And this is maybe a way to do that. Uh, to do it, to do a LERTA just for one business probably doesn't make sense. And the other part of it is you have to have everybody on board. The municipality, the school district, the county, the chamber, as Nick pointed out, I don't want to reiterate what uh, Nick has already said. And then you have to market the program. And, you know, so it's a tool. It could be a very good tool, a very powerful tool. But it has to be a well-thought-out and well-designed program.
I, I would agree with that statement and I, I don't know that we've put good thought into it. Um, but I, I think once again, I mean, this being the committee on, of city council, it's supposed to be, you know, looking toward economic catalysts. Um, the, uh, the, a, a new LERTA program could certainly be a catalyst. I'm just trying to think of, um, ways for us to sort of begin the process that, that, that looks at the process more comprehensively, that looks at specific zones with specific types of LERTAs. Um, and, and really looks at the, um, the various and sundry options. The, at least those options that have been sort of teased out by other municipalities. Um, uh, with an eye toward finding what's best for us. Um, Dave, your thoughts?
Your thoughts?
Well, I'm wondering if we, um, what the next step is. I mean, if, if we're interested in doing this and I see a lot of head nodding, um, from Adam. What's the next step? Is it, is it to contact the county, get the county and the school district in the same room with us and see if everyone wants to do it together? Or, or should we see what sort of order we want to do and then approach them later? And what's the, what's the?
I think that would be the better approach.
I think that would be better.
Is that, uh, it is to sort of, um, figure out what we want to do or at least the broad outlines of it. Because part of the, in order to really get county and school district buy-in, we have to have a specific plan. We don't, it might not be wise to go the, the complete route of say generating the, the ordinance that we're looking at before we approach the county and the school district. Um, but we would certainly need to, um, at least have, you know, an idea of specific zones, specific, uh, amounts of abatement and, and specific terms. Um, before, before I think we would want to, want to initiate discussion. And then we would need to expect that we might have to negotiate a bit, of course, um, in order to get their concurrence. But I think if, if we want to look at how to move the process forward, I might suggest that we make this and, um, a regular agenda item for ERC in say January and February, when there's not necessarily a whole lot else going on. Um, in the, you know, in terms of city activities. Um, and, and really kind of dig into it. Um, and that would give us time, uh, say if we started, um, with this as an agenda item in mid-January to look over the documents that Nick has sent. Um, kind of formulate some ideas, uh, maybe have some offline discussions about it and then, and then meet to really, uh, try to nail some stuff down, some initial proposals down in mid-January. Does that sound like a workable timeline?
I, I would suggest that maybe one of the things that you look at, you know, and you can keep it on the ERC agenda, I think that's a good idea. But I think you'll need a, a work session sort of outside of a public meeting, not because it needs to be private, but just because it's going to take a long time and a lot of, of working to do. Um, I would suggest that, you know, maybe representative or two from, from this board, whether it's you, Ms. Mealy as the chair, or it's, you know, Mr. Banks, because he brought this up, or Mr. Yoder, doesn't matter. But maybe to sit down with the administration and to say, okay, I, I think the first step is you need to set a goal and a vision. Because you can't figure out the details of what you want in your ordinance until you know what your vision and your goals are. You know, is it residential property improvement in the under, in the, you know, in the areas with low property value? Is it commercial development? Is it industrial development? Is it specific zones of the city? Um, what are our goals? And then, you know, from there you could bring sort of a, a very general ideas, here's where we want to get. And then ERC can say, here's our ordinance that we think supports that, that, you know, brings the resources necessary to get there. And then you'd have to, you'd have to approach the chamber, you'd have to approach the school district, the county and say, listen, we don't just want you to agree to this this time, we want you to buy into it because it helps all of us. Um, it's going to take some resources for advertising, it's going to take some resources to get the message out. But since it benefits all of us, you know, let's all be part of this. Um, and maybe that initial piece, since it also benefits them, just make sure that it gets done with the right steps. I don't know if the county planning department would, you know, agree to be part of that, but they could help us, you know, stay on track and develop a, a more comprehensive vision if, if we feel that's appropriate. But I think we need to figure out where we want to be before we start to work on the specifics of an ordinance.
I, I would agree 100% Mr. Grimes. Thank you for, for, um, making that suggestion. Um, I, I mean, I think a lot of it, un- unfortunately, a lot of this points to, um, e- even some of the zoning stuff we were discussing or earlier points to, um, a, a number of years where we've really had a lack of long-term vision in, um, in the city in terms of what we're hoping to accomplish and what sort of city we want to be. Um, and, and unfortunately, I, I, I think that we need to, that we should try to move forward with some of these, um, economic development incentives. Concurrently with trying to develop that long-term vision. Um, o- only because I feel as though we've, we've, we've sort of, um, sat back on a lot of this stuff long enough. Um, so I would agree that, that we should, that we should begin perhaps with a couple of conversations, um, regarding what we want to see as a city moving forward. Um, but then while we let that vision develop, I think we need to also look at, um, what tools can help us begin to get there, even though, even though we haven't got the vision completely firmed up. Um, I guess otherwise I'm afraid that developing the vision itself could take, could take a year and change. Um, and, and then, and then we need to look at putting the tools in place. Um, but, uh, with that said, I'm, I'm trying to think of a, of a good way to move on all of this sort of concurrently. Um, Dave, Adam, do you have any ideas? I, I think Nick makes, makes good suggestions. We need a work session with the administration. We don't need, um, all three members of a city council committee to attend it. Um, but I am trying to think of then moving out from that work session to incorporating other stakeholders like the chamber. Um, but possibly also the Williamsport Business Association. Um, and, 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 um, and I'm not certain that we might not be wise to incorporate the colleges as well to sort of look at a, a, a a vision and concept for Williamsport. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I mean, I agree with Nick 100%. Um, you know, in my mind, he's our probably city expert when it comes to this. Um, I think that process that we've talked about makes a lot of sense. I think it makes sense for us to have our ducks in a row internally before we do that. Um, I think honestly, the, the committee format is probably a natural conduit to have some of those discussions with other stakeholders. Um, so maybe whenever we kind of get our ducks in a row. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea to just, you know, try to get the, you know, the chamber, the, um, the larger nonprofit stakeholders here and, and let's just start to, um, you know, drive that process. Um, you know, and it's, at that point, it probably should be public. Um, you know, it's a good way for us to hopefully get some input from the community as well. I mean, that, that's, that's what this is ultimately for. It's about, um, providing a lot of, um, you know, growth and, and, and stability for our constituents. So, you know, they need to be providing a lot of, um, you know, growth and, and, and stability for our constituents, so, you know, they need to be a part of this too, and I think this committee is a good way for that to happen.
The one thing I wanted, I agree with everything Adam said, uh, the one thing I wanted to hammer home was, um, funding advertising. Um, we are going into a budget session. And if we're, if we're taking the lead on this, do we want to allocate, try to allocate at least a, a general number um, so that the other stakeholders can know that we're serious about LERTA going forward?
I, I think personally that would be a wise idea to look at, you know, I, I mean, it, it could be, I mean, we'll, we'll get through the budget, budget here, sessions and what have you, but, um, you know, if we're going to make strategic investments, this is one we absolutely want to do, and if we do it right, it's one that's going to pay off, not just for years, but for decades. So, um, I think that would be a very smart move.
Well, the other thing to remember on the timeline, sorry.
No, Nick, please go. I've got a lag here anyway, go for it.
I think I might as well. Um, I was just going to say, I think one of the other things to remember is that, you know, based on whatever timeline you want, eh, I don't think it, I don't want to intentionally work slow, but I don't think it would be bad to say, you know, we want the comprehensive program to be effective starting in 2022. That gives us an entire year to plan to figure out where we want to be, to figure out, you know, what partners we're going to ask to get in, and it can be in a budget, you know, not next year, but the year after, because we do have a current LERTA that's active until the end of 2022, so it's not that we don't have anything. Um, but that gives us a better timeline to develop our advertising strategies, to develop the department, you know, goals and, and what work's going to be designed to who and, and how we need to get to where we're going, and to start conversations with the chamber, the school district and the county, and, and we could still indicate to them that we're going to have a financial buy-in to that and, and that's okay, but I think it, it, it might be a little too fast to say that we can design a comprehensive program and advertise it effectively in, in a year's time.
Well, thanks, uh, for chiming in, Nick. I, I wanted to make sure we're covering that basis in case we could, so I, we, we will lean heavily on you and Skip for a lot of this guidance, so I appreciate it.
Um, yeah, tha- thanks, Nick, and I, and I think that's, I think those are words of wisdom. I think, right, we, um, I, I feel as though we almost always start projects saying, we need to get this done right now, and then perhaps because we get, we, we feel as though then it's not moving fast enough, things tend to fall by the wayside, so I think setting our sights on 2022 is probably a wise move anyway. Um, and from a budgetary perspective, I think that, uh, makes more sense as well, um, especially given next year's, um, just what total flux we're in right now with, with uncertainties about next year's budget and next year's income. Um, and hopefully that will, uh, have improved somewhat by the time we get to 2022. Um, uh, but all of that said, I think this is a valuable conversation. I guess, um, what I'm looking to walk away from this discussion item with is a plan, I'm, I'm gonna, if it's okay with everybody, I'm going to move ahead and just push all, push further discussion on loaded back to January. We're heading into the holidays, we're heading into budget season. Um, if we try and deal with it in the next month and change, I'm afraid it'll just, um, you, you know, we won't, we won't do it justice and waste our own time, because nobody will, will have kind of done their, done their research, but if we um, look to January to have some initial discussions about this, um, Nick, could you maybe put together a short list of people from the administration who should be involved in the discussion and, uh, Dave, do you want to be the point person from council, since this seems to be something new?
Sure, if Adam has no objections. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I think if you're okay with it, maybe, um, you know, Dave, if you can just reach out to the mayor and ask him if, if he wants to be the person, and not to develop a whole citywide, long-term vision, but maybe a, a short-term vision and goals specifically for LERTA. And whenever he wants to have that meeting, I would say that, you know, myself and, and Mr. Mimi would probably be the, the right people to be there with you and, and the mayor, whoever he would want to appoint to help us with that goal and vision setting.
Okay. Um, so does that sound like a good way to get the discussion started? And, I mean, and if, and if the discussion's starting that small, then, I mean, by all means, we can get it started in, in, in December too, if people feel comfortable with it. I just know how the holidays tend to snowball on all of us, um, even if we're not really holiday people. Um, uh, but Dave, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, but I'll give the mayor a call. That sounds good.
Um, all right, uh, then is there any other, anything else we'd like to say on that agenda item for today?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Um, Dave, in, uh, in terms of things we've discussed at past ERC meetings, I know we talked about mapping out sort of specific infrastructure-based city projects, but it's possible that we should also get some sort of workflow going for the cut, for the conceptual items that we would like to see, to see happening in the next year or so. Uh, what I feel, what I, what I know tends to happen is that I get very excited about one idea or another, think about it, you know, for a couple of weeks and then it slides off my plate because something else comes along. Um, so it might be wise if, if council and the administration are working on these sort of broader visioning projects that are likely to wind up taking a back burner to more immediate needs time and again, um, that we, that we try to create a, a, a mechanism for ourselves to, um, to stay up to date on where the discussion is and also, um, just to remind ourselves of, of the various irons we have in the fire. I don't know if either of you two has, um, a quick suggestion for that, but I'm thinking of, I don't know, even something as, as simple as, um, just putting all, just putting everything into a schematic of some sort, you know, uh, that, that, that shows sort of what, what the completion date that we're hoping for and then the steps that we're hoping to take to, to move on, on the, um, on the item. And at least that gives us something, you know, some sort of a framework to operate within, and, and, and we know when we've